Raising temperature. Couple minutes. You told me. He counts it. Okay. Thanks. Part of that, set on sixty-seven.
Is it on?
I bet. You better have coal. So you better have coal than the goofball. Yeah, sure, we've got to strike a balance.
That's right. That's right. You like you this week?
I don't know. Bad. It's so bad.
Hey, Nora.
Mr. Zirkel. Shouldn't it?
Yes.
Okay. We'll argue.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to call our city council work session to order. Our first topic for discussion will be a glow fiber broadband update. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As you're aware, the city previously entered into an agreement with Shenandoah Valley, or Shenandoah Telecommunications, and they're operating this glow fiber here in the city. With us today is Bud Zirkel from Glow Fiber. He's going to provide council an update on their status of their implementation at this point. Bud?
Thank you all for the invitation today. It's nice to be here and meet you all. This project has been a while in the making, as many of you have been involved understand, and we are happy to be making good progress. And I just want to be here today to kind of give you an update on where this project is and be prepared to answer any questions you might have. So we began construction last year and under the guise of a data franchise agreement, which we converted to the cable franchise agreement that we're working under today. We've made great progress so far with a lot of the construction being focused on downtown initially. We put in twenty-eight miles of fiber, most of which has been buried, which is unusual in a lot of the markets that we go into. We have four thousand homes lit so far, which is, in our view, very good progress, given the amount of time that we've been here. So with any project of this magnitude, it can be disruptive in a community, and so we take a lot of pride in making sure that we manage the process as carefully as we can. And that includes making sure that we notify our residents of upcoming construction, that we restore the landscaping to its original condition when we come in and have to dig something up, pavement and roadway repairs, we want to follow up on those immediately, and general cleanup. Traffic control, you know, that's another one that we work closely with the city in. You're also going to, your citizens will see a lot of equipment in the area, from bucket trucks to drilling equipment and the like. When construction is moving along, we do it neighborhood by neighborhood, typically in groups of anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty homes at a pop. But inevitably, as we're running feeder, you'll see cooled up pieces of fiber that may remain there as we progress through the city. Those will all eventually be cleaned up, but you may get questions from time to time as to why that's there and what's going on. But we will come back through and clean those up as appropriate. This map shows you a little bit about where we are and where we're going. The area in the red circle is the main focus of our activity at present. The darker green areas are areas that are lit, where we have approximately four thousand homes ready to provide service. The lighter green areas are areas that we have planned to build out through the remainder of this year and on into 2024. So the communications and trouble reporting, you know, what we try to do is, when we're coming into a neighborhood, we will notify residents via a mail piece about fifteen days in advance of construction. We'll do that again about five days in advance of construction with more specifics about exactly what we're doing. And then within twenty-four hours of construction, we put a door hanger on their doors saying, "We will be in your neighborhood." Included in all of those communications are contact numbers where they can reach out to us if they have questions or complaints. In addition to that, there's a vehicle where they can go in and sign up for alerts, and we will notify them via text message or whatever means they choose as to exactly what's going on. So that's proven a very effective means for us to stay in communication with the citizens, and it's a process that has evolved over time. We are in some thirty-five markets at this point across four or five states, and we continue to tweak that process, and we can do that specifically with the city of Suffolk if we need to. And we urge you all to put whatever communications you can on, whether it's your Facebook page or your website, to notify the citizens of any contact information that we can provide to them, so that they reach out directly to us and they're not calling your phone because their yard's dug up. So I mentioned early on that we started this under the guise of a data franchise, and really that was a mechanism to allow us to get started a little bit earlier. But what we did here, and is what we do everywhere, is a full-fledged cable franchise, which allows us to provide voice, video, and data. And we felt as a new entrant into this market, in order to be competitive, we need to be able to offer all three of those services to be able to attract customers. And so it is the streaming TV portion of that which requires that cable franchise. We have speeds up in excess, you know, the residential speeds are up to about 1.2 gigs, and there are special arrangements we can give to businesses which get us up north of, you know, five gigs where appropriate. Streaming TV, as many of you know, the whole world of television is changing. Broadcast television is starting to move away. Many of you probably get all of your television through something like Hulu or YouTube TV. But we provide a streaming TV product of our own, which provides the full lineup of local channels, as well as regionals and the stuff that you would normally be accustomed to getting on broadcast television. And of course, home phone. You can transfer your service to us if you so choose, but that piece of the business is going away too. Most people are using cell phones these days. Pricing, this is all on our website. We've pretty much standardized this everywhere we go. It's very simple. The only required service up there is internet. You cannot get television or telephone by itself. You have to buy internet from us first because the other two services rely on it. Just a study that was obtained by Chantel, just as a comparison. Chantel takes a great deal of pride in the level of customer service that they have. It is all domestic. It's all local here in Virginia. And compared to other providers of telecommunications services, you can see that we rank very highly compared to those. In fact, we're way up there with other brands that are pretty noteworthy in terms of customer service brands like Starbucks and Apple and Netflix. Many of you are familiar with the federal program called the Affordable Connectivity Program. Chantel Glow is a participant in that program. We can register customers for you online. They can do it themselves through the FCC's process, and we will reduce their bill by thirty dollars a month. And that's, there are a number of ways that customers can qualify that, whether it's free and reduced lunch or a certain level of income. There are varieties of ways on the website that will step you through that. So we expect to have twelve thousand homes serviced available by the end of this year. That's an additional eight thousand to where we are now. Workload will increase through 2024 and probably some spilling over into 2025. We will continue to update you guys on the progress of our construction. As I said early on, the bulk of our construction has been close to downtown at this point, but I think you'll see us rapidly now begin to move out and into the more rural parts of the market. Advertising campaigns will start in June. You know, I think we always wait till sort of there's a critical mass of people that we can actually market to, and so you'll begin to see that on local broadcast television here within June. The thirty-dollar ACP, we've already mentioned that. What else is here? I think that's it. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. Council questions or comments? Councilman Rector?
Yeah, Mr. Zirkel, if you could briefly, can you just kind of, the fire, I know you're not quite in my neighborhood yet, I'm downtown, but when you are in my neighborhood, what will my appliances and whatnot at my house look like?
It's a great question. And, you know, this is one area that we really differ a lot from traditional cable-type services. First and foremost, you've got a dedicated fiber which will come to your house, and it's just, you're the only person on that piece of fiber. We terminate that fiber for you on a box that's typically attached to the outside of your house. It's an optical termination unit, which essentially is a media converter. And what that does is converts the optical signal to a signal that you can use in your house, which is Ethernet. To that Ethernet, you can connect your own router, if you so choose. You can connect a router provided by us. You can connect your Wi-Fi. In terms of the devices that then consume whatever it is, if it's internet, obviously any Wi-Fi capable device in your house will be able to log on to that. If it's television and you want streaming, you could use a Roku box, you could use a fire stick, bring your own device. As many of, if you've used a fire stick, I think they're twenty-nine dollars or something at Best Buy, and you go. So that's really all that's required. If you have a Wi-Fi-enabled television, then that television can connect directly to your Wi-Fi, and you can use our streaming service. So it's a very simplified implementation. There's nothing that you have to rent from us or buy from us. The box, we place on the side of your house at no charge, and it remains there even if you disconnect the service.
Councilman Bennett?
Yeah, I just had one question. I see a lot of areas, what I call a stub, sticking up out of the ground. Is that, they are not connected in that area? Is that just the line being installed?
Probably so. It's difficult for me to say without seeing exactly what you're talking about, but typically in the case of buried fiber, we use what's called either a handhold or a pedestal. Our preference is to use a handhold because it's less visible. And what that is, it's a lot of cases, something the size of a small flower pot, but it's recessed into the ground. And so what you see is only a flat plastic cover. And then the drop is placed into your home, however your power comes in. If your power comes in overhead, then we'll come off of a pole and we'll follow power. And if your power comes in underground, we'll trench ours in from that flower pot. In cases where there's a pedestal, well, you know what a pedestal looks like. I mean, they're about three feet tall and, you know, about that big around, typically green. You know, we use less and less of those in this day and time. There is typically for about every two or three hundred homes is a cabinet that's enclosed. And if it's aerial plant, that might be attached to a pole, and it's probably no bigger than the size of a dorm refrigerator, whether it's on a pole or in the ground. So you may see those scattered at every two or three hundred homes to terminate the fiber. Does that?
Yeah, that's. I was, really, on Nazan Parkway area, a lot of the subdivisions in there, I see stub up out of the ground, the orange piece about two or three.
Oh, the orange piece?
Yes.
Oh, that's called interduct, is what that is. And so the way fiber is put into the ground is the interduct, which is just a hollow tube, and it's orange for a reason, so people don't cut it, is buried into the ground, and then the fiber is actually pulled through that interduct from stub to stub, and then it's spliced together at those locations.
Okay, so that's not connected yet.
It's probably not connected yet, so that will be finished up at a future date.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Just make a few comments. Number one, I'm very pleased with the progress that you've made, four thousand houses and projecting an additional eight thousand more by the end of the year. So that's a significant amount of homes, and based on where the installation area is now, I would imagine that most of those individuals did not have access to this type of service, if any service at all. So this is just another piece of the puzzle and part of what we're doing to try to ensure that every citizen in Suffolk ends up with the type of broadband service that he needs to have in today's world. So thank you very much for what you're doing, and thanks for keeping us updated.
Thank you. We welcome the opportunity to be here, and I appreciate having the time to talk to you today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, our next item will be a capital improvements plan and American Rescue Plan Act update. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. What we're going to provide you here at the second presentation is an overview of most of the projects we have ongoing, both from a CIP standpoint but also from the American Rescue Act projects, many of which we talked about before. Some of you have seen some updates periodically, but you're going to get the kitchen sink tonight, and we're going to tell you places that we may be struggling on a couple items or, but you're going to see projects that have recently been completed, to design, to construction, and upcoming. So with that, we'll have four directors providing this presentation. Gary's going to lead us off, and then I think followed by Mark, Paul, and then Robert. And I think you're going to see Robert and Paul twice. But, so here we go, and with that, Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As the manager stated, we have a lot of stuff to go through. We've got a lot of stuff going on. I'll kick it off with some of the projects that fall under my umbrella. Fire Station Eleven, which some of you, most of you probably know for a long time as College Drive Station. I think it was listed in CIP that way for, up until recently. So, but this is officially Fire Station Eleven now in Harborview. This station will be constructed in Harborview, off of Hampton Roads Parkway, to meet the growth and service needs of this area of North Suffolk. This station will be the largest standalone station that we have, that we will have, to the tune of twenty-one thousand square feet, four bays. Councilman Fawcett. It'll be a full-service facility, and will include a community room for public meetings, especially for that community, whether it's civic league meetings, and potentially will be a voting precinct. This room will be easily accessed by the public, and it will not, they can do so without disrupting the actual day-to-day operations of the fire and rescue. The way we've done that is we've got a separate entrance that has its own access, has its own access to public restrooms and such, so a very, very nice feature to that facility for the public. The project was advertised for bids on May seventeenth. We will receive bids at the end of this month, June twenty-eighth. Looking forward to that. We will commence construction in the fall, and we will complete it in the early part of 2025. Twenty-twenty-five sounds like a long ways away, but we're only talking a little bit a year and a half from now, so looking forward to getting this one going. Been working very hard. It's been a pleasure working with Chief Barack and all of his very professional staff in getting this project designed to meet their needs and also to meet, to help them serve the community of that part of the city. This project has a total allocation of twelve-point-two million dollars. Festival in Park. Festival in Park is one of the initiatives, one of the key initiatives in the downtown plan, to provide open green space in the core part of the city. It was a great opportunity when we were able to purchase this property when it became available. Couldn't ask for a more perfect spot for this particular feature to be located in downtown. It will be the home of, for festivals, live music, holiday events, markets downtown. It's basically going to create our community living room. This park will attract patrons in the downtown to support restaurants, retail, and services. The park design is a hundred percent complete as we stand today, and it is currently undergoing the site plan review process. So as soon as that's complete, we expect in the next couple of months, we will solicit bids for construction later this fall, commence construction by the end of the year, and looking forward to opening this new facility in June, just in time for the TGF series to kickoff in June of 2024. Total funding allocation for this one is two-point-one million dollars. Central Library. Now, this one's near and dear to my heart because it's been on and off my plate since my entire career here in the city of Suffolk. For almost twenty-five years, this project has been on and off the books, but it's on and it's ready to roll at this point. We're not, there's no backing down at this point. It's the construction of a new thirty-eight thousand square foot central library facility on West Washington Street, one block east of City Hall. The project design is one hundred percent complete and is currently undergoing the site plan review process, which we hope to wrap up here in the next couple of months. We will solicit bids for construction later this summer, early fall, and we will commence construction hopefully by the end of this year and complete it by the spring/summer of 2025. Been working very closely and working very hard with Clint Root and his staff at the library to design this facility to meet the needs of the public, meet their needs as a staff, to help them deliver the great services they provide to the community. Looking forward to this. I think the patrons are going to love this facility. It's a first-class state-of-the-art facility, and it's going to be a great asset to the library staff to deliver the services that they provide. Total project funding for this one has been a total of twenty-five-point-one million. John F. Kennedy Middle School, another one that's moving fast. This is for the construction of a new eight-hundred-seat middle school to replace the current six-hundred-student middle school. The project design is about ninety percent complete. It is currently undergoing the site plan review process. And let me give a shout-out to our deputy city manager, Kevin Hughes, our planning staff, public utilities, public works, all the staff that's involved with this review. This review is getting a lot of attention so we can move this through the review process as quickly as possible to help the school stay on schedule, to meet their construction schedule they like to meet, so they can open in the fall of twenty-five. They will solicit bids for construction this summer, with construction commencing in the fall, and will be complete, as I mentioned, in the fall of 2025. One note I'd like to make here, Suffolk Schools have received an award of fifteen million dollars in a grant from the state to assist with the construction of the project. And at this time, I'll ask Mark Furlough to come on up and talk about some of the Parks and Recreation updates.
Thank you, Gary. My name is Mark Furlough. I'm the, your director of Parks and Recreation. So the first project I'm going to be talking about has been its recreation center, which is completed. The rec center is open, so very excited about that. This is our third freestanding recreation center in the city. We have sixteen thousand six hundred square feet of recreational space, including a fitness center, multipurpose room, game room, group exercise room, and there's a walking trail in the back. The total cost for that project was six-point-two million. Another project we're working on is Nazan River Water Access. We've acquired the former Brady's Marina site, and we are working to acquire additional right-of-way from Westminster Presbyterian Church to increase the width of the road. And we're also working with the U.S. Army Corps and Senator Warner and Senator
have received an award of $15 million in a grant from the state to assist with the construction of the project. And at this time, I'll ask Mark Furlough to come on up and talk about some of the Parks and Recreation updates.
Thank you, Gary. My name is Mark Furlough. I'm your Director of Parks and Recreation. So the first project I'm going to be talking about has been its recreation center, which is completed. The rec center is open, so very excited about that. This is our third freestanding recreation center in the city. We have 16,600 square feet of recreational space, including a fitness center, multipurpose room, game room, group exercise room, and there's a walking trail in the back. The total cost for that project was $6.2 million. Another project we're working on is Nazan River Water Access. We've acquired the former Brady's Marina Site, and we are working to acquire additional right-of-way from Westminster Presbyterian Church to increase the width of the road. And we're also working with the U.S. Army Corps and Senator Warner and Senator Kane's office to come up with funding strategies for a dredging project next to the boat ramp. Constance North Park, it's still, it's currently under design. Phase one and two of the plans are approved. Phase three plans are at 90%. We're also waiting on a grant from the National Park Service. We anticipate getting that award sometime between July and September of this year. The Suffolk Seaboard Coastline Trail. So we just started design on Segment 3B. Segment 3B will pick up where we left off with the suburban segment, right there on Nazan Parkway, and it will go to the, it will end at the Cedar Lake Shores neighborhood. We also, later this year, we will get funding to start design on Segment 1, which will pick up on Moore Avenue and go all the way to Suburban Avenue. So those two pieces, together with the suburban trails, are going to give us a pretty long segment of trail in the downtown area. We're also submitting a grant application for Seaboard West this month. We're hoping we'll be successful with that. Also going out with the Seaboard Coastline Trail, we got a grant from the Oversea Foundation to put in a fitness park along the Seaboard Trail in the Pewsville section of the city. You can see the equipment is up. We're just waiting on the surfacing to be installed. We're thinking that's probably going to be this week. And we're working with the City of Norfolk to get an easement so we can put a walking path from the trail that would go to the fit park. But if you're on, if you're going down Shoulders Hill Road, if you look off to the east, you'll see this fit park right around Pewsville Road, right near Bob White Parkway and Pewsville Road. Bennetts Creek Tennis Court renovations. This project is currently out to bid. We ended up having to move the tennis courts because they are in the wetlands or in the RPA. So we actually have to move the location of the tennis courts about two feet from its current location to get it out of the RPA. We received grants from the Oversea Foundation and the U.S. Tennis Association to reconstruct these tennis courts. And like I said, this project is out to bid. We have a pre-bid meeting later this month, and we're hoping to start construction sometime late this summer or early fall. Cypress Park Pool is another one of our projects that we just recently completed. We added a beach entry and some, several spray features, and we expanded the size of the locker rooms. The capacity, we've increased the capacity up to 300 patrons for the pool, and the pool is open to the public right now. We're open on the weekends from 2:00 to 6:00 on Saturdays and Sundays. Then once school gets out, we'll be open Tuesday through Sunday every day. We'll also be teaching swim lessons and some of the water aerobics and some of the other things that we do out there at the pool. Also at Cypress Park Pool, or Cypress Park, we just built a new playground. This was funded by the, by HRSD in exchange for the utility easement that we granted them to go through the parking lot of Cypress Park. You can see the playground equipment is up, and this, again, we're waiting for the surfacing to go down. We're expecting that to go down sometime next week. So we're looking forward to getting that playground open for the kids and for the summertime. And now I will turn it over to Paul for Public Utilities.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Members of City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to showcase several of our CIP projects for the Department of Public Utilities. I'm going to start out with a couple that have been recently, very recently, completed. Pump Station Number 24, Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Number 24. You'll see this just off of Holland Road in the corridor of the construction. It's located just off Falk Road in, off Holland Road. This replaced an existing outdoor pump station. When I say an outdoor pump station, you can look at this, the photo, and you're right, you say, well, that's an outdoor pump station. But to us, an outdoor pump station is a pump station where all the controls and the electric components of the station are located without a structure over it. So buried back near Falk Road, there was an older outdoor pump station. This pump station in the photo replaced that. That was placed in service in March of this year. Pump Station Number 50, it's located on Williams Road off of Wilroy. That is not a brand-new pump station, but rather a rehabilitated pump station. That has new pumps, piping, electrical equipment. That was placed in service also in March of 2023. One project that's listed in our CIP under the line item of miscellaneous pump station improvements, I want to highlight a couple of photos here. It actually illustrates a challenge that we have within the department with some of the elements that are actually put into the sanitary sewer system. What you're seeing in the photograph there are some of our sewage pumps that have been broken apart, that have been subjected to what we call ragging. This is where the quote-unquote disposable wipes are flushed into our system and actually become wound around the rotating impeller of the pump and therefore clogging up the pump. What this has resulted in is just increased staff labor to go out there. In some cases, on one of our pumping stations, we were out there three times a week pulling pumps with our boom truck to break the pumps apart and clear the ragging out. What we did with some of our CIP money at several of our pump stations was to install new chopper style pumps, which is a different style design of the impeller, to take those disposable wipes and chew them up and send them down the system. We've put these in at multiple pump stations right now, a combination of labor and materials, equipment. We've spent just a little bit north of $300,000 to rectify this situation. So we're always on the lookout to try and identify where these wipes are coming from, but they're not often able to be identified. A lot of them come in from retail-type establishments that are doing janitorial work. And I just want to remind our citizens, they are not flushable wipes. They can be flushed, but they're not supposed to be flushed. Moving on to under design, one project that we've spoken of in the past is the Butler Lake Dam Improvements. This is a water supply dam, one of two within the City of Suffolk, owned by the City of Suffolk, located at Lone Star Lakes. This is an earthen dam consisting, the project consisting of clearing and grubbing, regrading, and installing protection, rock protection of the dam face. It increases the erosion protection of that face. Right now, we're in regulatory permit reviews. That has proven to be a challenge. That has dragged out for quite a while now. We expect the permitting reviews to be done probably within the next month or two, with an anticipated bid date in early fall of 2023. Also under design, there's a great photo of a quote-unquote outdoor pump station. This is Pump Station 17 in the Kilby Shores area. It's tucked between two residential properties. We're going to relocate and replace this pump station with a brand-new pump station with a structure down the Roque and Tannell Court. So in order to do that, we're going to install some new gravity sewer main, run it down the road, build this new pump station, and also install a new force main. We just recently received an easement from the City of Portsmouth to install the force main. That was hanging out there for quite a while, but we just recently received that in the last two weeks. Anticipated bid date on this one is July of this year. Also under design, a little bit of a unique project. This consists of two locations. We call this the Downtown Sewer Replacement Project. These two condition assessment issues with sanitary sewer were identified through our special order by consent condition, a field condition assessment program. There are two locations here. One location is at the intersection of Bank Street and Commerce Street. That's roughly where we're standing when this picture was taken. It's looking at the back end of the Suffolk Methodist Church. There's a section of fairly large diameter sewer and a fairly deep sewer that runs very close to the proximity of that building, to the foundation of the building. So what we're going to do here is provide some bypass pumping to get the flow off that line, and then we are going to relocate this section rather than dig down and repair it because we don't want to compromise the foundation of the church. The second one is located at a great intersection, South Main and West Washington Street. Doesn't get any busier than that. So we've got a compromised sewer section there that we're working through with a consultant to replace. All of these, when you look at it from maybe the 40,000-foot level, and you think, well, we're just replacing a few sections of failed sanitary sewer. The challenge here is traffic control, it's flow control, while we're bypassing these heavily-used sewers. So those are underway right now, under design. Also under design, Old Town Sewer and Water Replacement Project. This is a project that's being done jointly. We're really piggybacking on the Department of Public Works with this. This is a replacement of water and sewer on Pinner Street, Gray Street, and Holiday Street. Like I said, it's a joint project with DPW, brand-new sanitary sewer, water main piping, and then also the service from the main to the meters. Pump Station 62 Rehabilitation, just started in this. This is another rehab, not a brand-new station. It's located off Holland Road near Lakewood High School. New pumps, piping, electrical equipment. Anticipated bid date, January of next year. Also under design, this has been with us for a while. This is the Cedar Hill Cemetery Gravity Sewer Replacement. This is located south of Cedar Hill Cemetery. You can see in this photo the Suffolk Railway Museum there, looking towards the Pinner Street Bridge. This is a replacement of a compromised gravity sewer main that runs really around the backside of the cemetery and along the walking path. The plan here is to use a trenchless construction technique, along with some excavation techniques. This schedule has also been affected by regulatory permit review, not only from the Corps of Engineers, but people that are looking at our friends, the northern long-eared bat. Why the northern long-eared bats are in the south, I don't know, but they do affect tree-clearing regulations, and those are looked at pretty heavily. They're now considered an endangered species. Also under design, we're getting close on this one, the Westport Water Pump Station. You've seen the photographs there. The pump station in the lower left, along with the tank, it's a standpipe. This is located off Holland Road across from Virginia Port Logistics Industrial Park. This allows us to make some chemical feed improvements, some improvements in pump maintenance access, get the pumping units out there to maintain them, as well as improvements in the disinfectant mixing within that tank. Relatively, new project on the CIP list as far as a new tank. This is the County Street Elevated Water Tank Replacement. This is an existing 500,000-gallon tank. It's located at the intersection of County Street and Johnson Street. This was constructed in 1949, so it's an old one. Right now, we're in the process of looking at various site-location alternatives. So that's what's under review currently. Pump Station 4, this is in the Boston area of the city, located on Lincoln Avenue, really at the far end of Lincoln Avenue. This is a brand-new pump station constructed behind an existing pump station. It's a challenging project. You can see there in the photograph, that's the existing pump station. The contractor's mobilized, started to clear, do some grubbing and clearing. That station is going to be constructed behind that existing location, very close to some homes, so we're trying to be very careful as we approach this one. Anticipated completion, May of 2024. Couple others that are under construction, Pump Station 67 Rehabilitation. Again, not a brand-new station, but Cedar Lake Shores, new pumps, piping, electrical equipment. That's about 85% complete in construction. Anticipated completion coming up July of 2023. Pump Station 46, just started in construction. That's located on Kansas Street, actually one of our smaller pump stations, but fairly old. New pumps, piping, electrical equipment, as well as the rehabilitation of the wet well. Contractors currently mobilizing. Anticipated completion, spring of 2024. Kilby Avenue Water System Improvements. This is the replacement of some lines, water mains that are along Kilby, along with some pavement restoration. The new water mains currently are completed. We are waiting on the service connections to be made. So right now, the water main and the connection will need to be made between the main and the meters, and then they'll be hooked up to the individual homes. That's moving along. You can see in the photo, the existing trench cuts for the brand-new water main piping along Kilby Avenue. Another project I want to highlight, that's not our Department of Public Utility CIP project, but this is the Holland Road Widening Project, but it has a big water and sewer component to it. And I really want to give kudos to our staff as far as some of the reallocations that have had to take place with the large diameter water transmission piping, along with the force main piping. These are large diameter reallocations that have taken place often to reduce outage in the middle of the night. We've really learned a lot about what we need to do to get the message out there, whether that's through media, through door hangers, through digital signboards. Maybe you haven't seen these, but we've set these up in some of the subdivisions, to really get the message out there when the water service, the outage is going to occur. So really having gotten a lot of pushback on that, not a lot of negative feedback, so that's telling me we're getting the message out there. An important part of this has been the coordinated message with, not only with us, but with Public Works and also with Fire and Rescue. It's involved, in some cases, sending out detailed maps to Fire and Rescue, which really target the fire hydrants that are going to be out of service, along with the outage hour, so they know exactly what's going on. So staff's done a very good job with working with the DPU staff, DPW staff. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Lewis for updates on Department of Public Works projects. Robert?
Good evening. A lot of what we're going to talk about this afternoon is an update to what we talked about at the retreat, but just as an update. So there are a number of projects out here you may or may not have seen before. Our TOC is our Traffic Operations Center. We are well underway. We're at about a 90% design. One of the things is we had to have a public involvement. It's called a posting of willingness. That's going out here this month, and with that, hopefully being completed and successful early this fall, that will move forward to bid in construction. There are a number of projects we've been able to get funded over the years that we call signal timing. This one we call citywide. Again, it gives us the opportunity to address some concerns. This particular project, we're going to address the signal at Torrington Road and Carolina Road, get rid of that span wire, and try to bring it up to a more modern signal. Spate Spillway Bridge Replacement. There is a bridge on Torrington Road that has some weight restrictions on it. We've been working on that, and we're at about a 30% design. We thought we knew what we were going to do going forward. We started getting some feedback from the City of Portsmouth. There are some issues with the dam related to the spillway, possibility of the spillway being relocated, doing something different. We were kind of floundering, and I've asked for a meeting with the appropriate folks at City of Portsmouth and with DCR very shortly, to try to come to an understanding so that when we move forward, we move forward with a positive project that we don't want to come back and redo later on. Pittman Town at Mill Swamp, again, one of our small secondary bridges, again, state-of-good repair. So that is, I've mentioned that before, that has been a great program for the city. It has helped us bring so many of our substandard bridges up. That's at a 60% planned development, and we're hoping to advertise that spring of next year. Nazan Parkway over Beaman's Mill. Again, that was one that was moving along, and we got some feedback from VDOT. They decided they thought we should do some different design. We kind of went on a hiatus for a short period of time. VDOT has since come through with additional funding to help us do this additional widening that they thought was appropriate. Again, we're at a 90% plan, and we're getting ready to hold the posting of willingness, and with that, hopefully be to bid in the not very distant future. Crimden Road at Route 17. We are in the current process right now of relocating all the private utilities to power the cable, the gas, and so forth, and this project goes to bid in December of 2023. Nazan Parkway at Bennetts Pasture. Again, we have finished acquisition of right-of-way, and at that location also, we are coordinating to get the utilities underway, get them out of the way, rather. And again, we're anticipating this advertisement in about 60 days in July. Pewsville Drainage. We're at a 90% planned development. We are still coordinating with the City of Chesapeake and trying to get a final review, because again, this water does outfall in the City of Chesapeake, and we are building some infrastructure in their city. Again, this project is being supplemented by the ARPA funds. It allows us to move forward, and again, I'll touch on that again in a moment. Pitchkettle Road Realignment. We have now closed on the last property, so we have all the right-of-way acquisition necessary. We are beginning coordinating with the utilities to get those moves. If you remember, when you drive that corridor, there's a lot of overhead utilities, a lot of telephone lines on one side of the road, a lot of power lines on the other side of the road. Halfway through, they swap. So I don't know why everybody couldn't get on one side, but we've got a lot of coordination to do there. Again, we hope to have that under advertisement by mid next year. Freeman Mill at Spivey Swamp, again, another one of our secondary bridges. We have completed the right-of-way. The final design is, we are in the final design, so we're getting the final sets of plans to be reviewed and approved, and we hope to have that to advertisement this December. Shoulders Hill Multi-Use Path. We just awarded that to Blair Brothers with a notice to proceed on June 15. So very shortly, you will start seeing work out there where that widening comes in, we get that path in. That runs from Bennetts Creek Park Road back to the Deerfield subdivision. Again, ties those neighborhoods together. neighborhoods together. Nansman Parkway over Willroy Road. Again, we have awarded that to Virginia Carolina Civil. Pre-construction meetings and notice to proceed are coming up in about 60 days, and construction will be started very soon. You may have already seen utility relocations going on out there. All the power's moved. Verizon is actually out there this week, shifting things around and finishing up, and that's well underway. Long Street at Summerton Creek, again, another one of our bridges. Seawood Marine was the low bidder on that, and we're just waiting on the final approval by VDOT of that bid to award that to move forward. Torrington Road at Kilby Creek. Curtis Contracting was awarded that. We gave them notice to proceed back in mid-May, and actually, Torrington Road is closed to through traffic. So I have quite a few people saying, why is the road closed? Well, if they see how deep that pipe is down that we've got to dig up and replace, they'll understand. So again, very, very small footprint, but very major impact. Shoulders Hill Road at Route 17. We can get in additional details on that as we need to, but as you all are aware, we were delayed for 17 months by one of our franchise utilities, and as such, when we went back, when we finally cleared that and we went back to the contractor, who was a successful bidder, he just told us he was sorry, but he could not honor those bids at that extended period of time due to the economic conditions. So therefore, we've had to readvertise that, will need to readvertise that project. And again, I can get in additional details on that later on, but there's a number of things we've now got to do in order to get that back out and get it moving. Pruden Boulevard at Prudence, that's out at the, I call it Vo-Tech. I'm not sure what the correct title of that facility is. Is it a college and career academy or something like that? But anyway, that project is well underway. We've cleared all the utilities. You're seeing dirt turn. They're starting to put drainage structures in, and again, that's well underway. And again, we anticipate that actually being completed this spring. There is a S G R paving project, so there's five different locations around on our arterials that VDOT has identified and give us paving money. That's ongoing, and you started seeing some of that occur. Again, we're in prime paving season. Carolina Road at Cypress Swamp, that was the Route 32 bridge that was closed for a while. We have had some rideability issues out there. We've been working with VDOT and a contractor. What we're waiting for at this point, we do know we've got to do another short-term closure to go out there and address the issues at the tie-in of the bridge. We're waiting for school to close. When that traffic kind of goes off the roadway for a while, we're probably going in and doing extended weekend closure, rewrite the traffic around on the side street again, and come in there one weekend, pull the asphalt up, pull the concrete that's bad, get it all poured back and opened back up by Monday morning. That's our goal. And again, we hope to have that done early this summer. 58 Corridor, one of my favorite projects. Traffic is certainly flowing out there, sometimes better than others and faster than others, but we are moving along. We're about halfway through the project, a little over halfway through the project. We're in Phase 2. We're anticipating going to Phase 3. What Phase 3 will be is a complete shift of traffic to the opposite side of the highway, which is now going to put traffic on the side that is the actual final roadway that we're going to have. So we'll shift them all to the south side of the roadway to go back on the north, finish the northbound side. So a lot of what you see out on the northbound side that people are riding on today, that outside lane, a lot of that was temporary. Again, to make widening wide enough to get all the traffic over there, that will then get taken out. The road grade will be risen up to match the new eastbound side, and then the final phase, as you're aware, is the traffic gets split and we finish in the middle of the highway with the medians. But again, at this date and time, the project is on schedule and on budget. Manning Bridge Road, again, part of the same bigger project. Construction is ongoing. These, some of these intersections, such as Manning Bridge Road, are a very big challenge, because again, while we're building a road, we've also got to maintain traffic. We've got to allow school buses through. We've got to allow employees through, tractor-trailers. So we have a lot of issues there. So it is a little bit painful sometimes as we try to shift traffic around and slow folks down and rewrite them and get them through, but we are making progress. And again, we're to the point now where you really start seeing progress on these things. In the past, so much that has been done as part of these highway construction projects have been underground. It's infrastructure that's not really visible. We're getting to the point now, it's kind of like the siding on the house. You're getting to where you're starting to see the house tape shape. Nansman Parkway Traffic Signal Improvements, again, that's some issues with some coordination of traffic signals and interconnection, and we have been working through some conflicts we've had with Verizon, and that's well underway. Bridge Road Traffic Signal Updates, again, that has to do with interconnection of traffic signals. There are some variable message boards that are coming out there that'll give us the ability to communicate. We've ran into a couple of unexpected issues, but those are all moving forward, and I believe we're just waiting on a couple of final submittals for some change orders to finish that project up. And finally, the Suffolk Bypass I T S Improvement, same type of thing. You've seen the guys that are putting the conduit in. This is to run fiber up and down there. This is to start connecting some of these disparate systems we have all over the city, connecting those into one integrated system. That all will feed back into the Traffic Operations Center that I mentioned in the beginning. So we have completed several projects recently. With the fiscal year '21 State-of-Good Repair paving, there were six projects that were done. Those are now complete. East Washington Street at Jericho Canal, I hope everybody's had an opportunity to ride across that. I had some friends say, I don't think you guys are going to ever finish this. It's not going to look good. And they come back and they said, you know what? That actually looks really nice. And it did. It came together really well. It was a challenge, because again, we did not have the opportunity to close that bridge, so we had to build it half at the time. But again, I think they were doing final paving Monday, maybe, when I went through, but again, it looks really, really good. Turned out well. Elwood Road at Kingsale Swamp, again, one of our small secondary roads, almost in Isle of Wight County, but if you ride and look at it, it's something to be proud of. The contractor did an outstanding job. It is a beautiful new bridge, paving job, just gorgeous work, and I wish all our bridges around could come to that standard, but it was a great success for it. And also, our downtown drainage improvement. Mr. Jones talked earlier about the library. One of the things you guys remember, we did a lot of work right over here down the street, upgrading underground drainage systems, trying to improve the drainage in the street, but that project also supports the library that's about to become part of our reality downtown. It puts the system in place to take that storm drainage away without unduly flooding any of the areas. So new projects that are yet to come, we talked about a number of these. Again, Godwin Boulevard Widening. We rewarded money through the Smart Scale Project to widen Godwin Boulevard from a four-lane divided to a six-lane divided highway. That's going to begin design here very shortly in 2023. One of the really neat things about this project is it goes back over 35 years. When I first got out of college, I first went to work for VDOT. They were designing that. If you guys remember something called Hollywood East, that was when the movie theater was supposed to come. That road was designed to be a six-lane highway. The state designed it. They bought all the right-of-way, and then some of the conditions changed out there, and the need for six lanes went away. So what they did is they just didn't pave the inside lanes, the median. So you'll notice that median out there is a little bit extra wide. The beauty of this, to widen this road, all the work we're going to do is going to be in the median. Well, I won't say all. We're hopefully going to do some drainage along the outer edges, but again, it should be a very easy, not a lot of unanticipated issues. We should not have very many, if any, utility project issues out there. So again, great thing. We will come back in the very near future and brief you all on some of these new innovative intersections, such as this diverging diamond interchange. Again, that's to be a part of this Godwin Boulevard interchange that we're looking at, and we're also considering it for the Route 460. Kind of a new innovative thing. You first look at that, and you think, that's the craziest thing I've ever seen. But if you watch it and you drive it, they actually work very well and very efficient, and again, will be great additions for us. Bridge Road Widening, we're getting ready to hopefully kick off the next segment of that, which goes down towards the Obuse Hospital, and again, that design begins this fall. There are also two additional traffic signal projects coming up, that again, we begin design this winter. And what's, the last one there is kind of an interesting, it's called, this is a VDOT name, the Non-Median Brake Improvements on Route 58. What that actually is, on the six-lane going across the swamp, historically, that's been a corridor where there's been a lot of crashes, where people have left the roadway, gone into trees, grown into the waterway out there. This project goes back in there. It was an analysis, and we're going to add additional guard rail in there to keep people in the road and out of the trees. Now, the interesting thing about that, where we also have the SIPs of flyover going into the landfill, so we're trying to coordinate now. I believe some of the area that this originally was intended to be is now going to be covered by that SIP to flyover, so we may be able to get even more guard rail out there and make that corridor even safer by coordinating these two together. But I'll keep you advised of that. And with that, I believe we have an update on the ARPA projects, and I believe Mr. Retell and I are going to kind of tag team.
Thank you, Robert. As Robert mentioned, I'd like to start, before we get into some of the specific projects that have been funded through the ARPA program, a couple, two key dates you have to keep in mind with this program. One is December of 2024, and the other one is December of 2026. December of 2024 is when we have to complete, if we're going to have to reallocate any of the grant funds to adjust for as we get into some of these projects. If we get into some preliminary engineering and we realize we might have to do something a little bit different, and maybe have to move some of the funding around, that has to be completed by 2024. 2026 is the deadline by which all of the money has to be expended on the ARPA-funded projects. So that's important to keep in mind. With that, talk a little bit about the broadband infrastructure. There was $5 million allocated to that. That was for the South Side Network Authority for the middle mile, supplemented by $3 million with the VADI grant, which is for matching grant for the broadband last mile. ARPA funding that was allocated towards nonprofit funding. As we get into these, it's important to remember that these grants are what are called reimbursable grants. So the organizations that we're going to talk about and list on the next slide, before they receive the grant money, they would have to submit to us what they've spent the money on for review, and then they would be reimbursed for those expenditures. So a total of 1.5 million was appropriated to assist nonprofit organizations, and that's for two different reasons. One is to take a look at economic harm that was sustained by a particular organization due to the pandemic, but then also, secondly, to provide programs or services to the City of Suffolk residents in response to the pandemic and its negative impacts to them. So of that 1.5 million, about 1.1 million has been awarded to date to 16 nonprofit organizations, which we'll list on the next slide. There will be, that's the first round of awards. There will be a second round of nonprofit funding. Those applications are due tomorrow, June 8th, and each of these has a 50, for the second round, a $50,000 maximum award. So what are those organizations? From round one, there's the Food Bank of Southeast Virginia. There's the Southeast Virginia Health System, Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts, the Western Tidewater Free Clinic, Geneva Shelter, Beacon of Hope, the Children's Center, Virginia Legal Aid Society, Suffolk Literary Council, Nansman Suffolk Historical Society, Children's Hospital of the King's Daughter, Four Kids Walk in It, Coalition Against Poverty in Suffolk, or CAPS, Geneva Shelter 2, it's on there twice. They came back to us with a second application for some additional funding, which was approved. That's why it's on there twice, two different awards. Suffolk Humane Society, and then also the Suffolk Art League. Moving on to some of the joint projects that our department has, along with Department of Public Works, Third Avenue, the Williamson Area Water System and Drainage System Improvements. This project consists of replacing the water main with new increased-capacity mains, so take those older mains out. Included in that project would be new water meters and water service lines, also improving the street drainage, removing the old wooden curbs with new concrete roll curbs. This project has gone very well, almost near completion. The majority of the new water main piping has been installed. They've got some connections to make. Anticipated water service connection completion will be coming up this next month, July 2023, and then followed up with the street restoration, the wood curb replacement in the summer months, in the next couple of months, 2023. Oakland Area Improvements, again, a joint project. This is new water main there, brand-new pump station and force main. Key part of that is septic system abandonment in the 75-home area that was selected. Also, some drainage improvements. As we get into the preliminary engineering of this, this is where some of this funding might need to be adjusted a little bit. As we look at some of the preliminary engineering and we see some of the impacts on different types of drainage systems, whether that involves easement, acquisition or property acquisition, utility relocations, we have to take a look at those things and how they impact the overall schedule, remembering we have to be done with this by 2026. So may need to be some adjustments in the type of drainage system that's ultimately designed and constructed out in that area. We're advancing this project to the 60% design. We did receive a notice, initial notice of grant funding from the Department of Environmental Quality ARPA program to fund up to $750,000 for the work on the private property of these 75 homes, both to abandon septic tanks and connect new plumbing to the city brand-new system. So we're working through the details of those grants, that grant right now, and a phone call with D E Q last Friday to work through their rules and regulations with those grants. There are some pieces in there with public engagement, which we plan to do anyway. So those things are coming up, and we will come back to you with what we're going to do with public engagement in, for this project. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Lewis.
So again, we have a number of projects that are ongoing. Also, Lloyd Place and Rosemont, we've been installing curb. We are well underway out there. We're about 75% through that. That included upgrading driveway aprons, putting drop inlets in, doing curb installation. Again, very well received by the community. South Hill and Pleasant Hill, that was one of the initial projects that was asked to be included. As Paul mentioned, sometimes when you get into a project and you really start looking at the hard engineering, you find there are issues that crop up out there that are not insurmountable, but they're much more difficulty. Sometimes it's timing, and sometimes it's other things. In this particular case, as we did the study, there is a tail, what's called a tailwater issue. It has to do with the level of drainage in Shingle Creek, and it did not allow, we did not find a good workable solution in order to be able to finish that project in that area. And we may be coming back with you guys with a recommendation of how to slightly shift that money and continue doing what we hope to do, but just have to do a little different spot, because we can't overcome some of those engineering concerns. Webb Street in Oxford, again, the survey work is well underway. We're in the preliminary design, and that may be where some of the South Suffolk Pleasant Hill gets shifted, or just do a bigger piece of that area to, again, somewhere that we can easily meet the deadlines that we're required to meet with this federal money. Oakland Stormwater, as we, as Paul mentioned, as we got into Oakland, there were a number of things that we discovered. Very much variable widths on the existing streets. In some cases, the streets are not even in the public right-of-way. Utility poles, the need for utility and not utility easements and/or right-of-way acquisition in order to do the full underground drainage system with curb and gutter and drop inlets. Again, we believe that's going to be a no-go as far as meeting the timeframe, but what we have done, we've gone back and done a little different analysis. There are about five different improvements that we've identified to help the drainage in that community we'll go ahead and do, and what that will actually do at the end, if we accomplish that, we will set ourselves up to where, should someone on council come back with a C I P project in the future, we can program a C I P that gives us the time to go in there and actually acquire the easements and deal with those legal issues that take a little more time sometimes to get through and finish the neighborhood act. It's also our belief that possibly some of the money that was going to be used for the drainage may be necessary to kind of help the water and sewer through, because again, of challenges in there. But again, we'll be bringing you additional information back on that. Likewise, on East Washington Street, we had been asked to look at an area to see if we could put sidewalk and storm drainage in, because again, because of right-of-way issues, easement issues, and utility issues, we do not believe we can accomplish that in the time identified. We have reached out and have some alternate locations very nearby that we think will meet the criteria and be able to be performed. And again, we can come back with a different project in the future, should council so elect to address that specific area. But again, we'll be bringing you additional information in the very near future on that. And with that, I believe that concludes the combination show we have today, but all four of us are available. Should you have any questions, we can answer.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone. I think the manager made a statement. We had a lot to listen to, and I agree. At this point, council, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to ask from, for any of the staff at this time? Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I would tell you, I came up Shoulders Hill to come downtown just a little earlier today, and they are putting that today, and they are putting that turf down on that turf track for the fit area there. It looks pretty awesome. I mean, I just wanted to let you know that they are working hard out there, and it looks like they're rolling pretty good. So that was a pretty good deal. And Gary, as always, so thank you for coming back and enlightening me on the four bays, as you always do. That is going to be a monumental plus for the city of Suffolk in the future. So I want to thank you for enlightening me on that. And I always ping on you on some other items out there, but you are very gracious, and I want to thank you for your information. The only thing I had for Mr. Lewis, you said there was a signal tracking upgrade going to take place in two locations, but you never identified where those two signal timing trackings were going to be. Where are you specifically talking about?
To be perfectly honest with you, it's standing in front of you at this moment, I just drew a blank, and I cannot answer that for you.
That's okay. All right. Well, you can circle back with me at some other time, it's not a big deal. But I would want to thank each and every one of you, along with the city manager and staffs and all your, you know, personnel, it's phenomenal what you guys have accomplished in continually accomplishing here. There's been a lot of improvements, and I see a lot more coming. So I just want to extend that myself, thank you. I'm sure I'll have a lot more to ask you about at a later time, but I'm not going to tie it up now, so I appreciate it.
Councilman Bennett?
Robert, why are you up there? Just a couple of questions. Nansen Parkway, which I don't think was up there, and Portsmouth Boulevard, with the Royal Farm going at that intersection with 711 there on each side of it.
Yes, sir.
I already see problems there. How are we going to address that situation now?
So there are certain improvements that the rural farm are required to make as a part of their proffers to get their permits. So they're going to make some improvements generally on Nansen Parkway at the intersection. There are certainly several other developments that have come before council over the last number of years residential that have proffers to do additional work at that intersection. However, they do not do that work until they begin the projects, those projects have not kicked off. We, we in Public Works identify that as a concerning intersection that needs to be addressed. We are looking for opportunities to try to find some funding. So certainly, there's several opportunities. One, in the foreseeable future, council could elect to create a CIP project there to try to address it. We're always looking at our federal and state funding opportunities. It probably does not rise to the level of a smart scale, but maybe a revenue scale. CMAC, RST, again, we're constantly submitting stuff, and that is on our list, that we, we're trying to figure out what is the right combination and seeking money to find that.
Well, one other thing was brought to my attention, I noticed they're doing a BMP right there, close to the intersection. And the house right across the street, back of 711, by going into that neighborhood there, it floods. And I just wondered, that's going to put, have y'all looked at, is any of that water going to go across over into that man, property?
No, sir. That stormwater facility is strictly for his, for that particular rural farm site, and it drains off, I believe, to kind of the north and east, back towards the bypass.
And that's what I'm afraid of, because that floods right there in that area by the Rotens Club.
Yeah, this is on the opposite side. So I believe that water goes the opposite way coming off the rural farm site. There was an outfall through the back of the park and ride lot and a drainage way, natural drainage way through there, kind of between AB Street and C Street in there.
Okay, so it don't go across the other way.
Again, they did analyze it to make sure it was adequate outfall, so that should not make him any worse. That project probably will not make him any better, but it should not make him any worse.
Okay. And my final comment is on the flyover at Nansen Parkway in Royal Oak.
Yes, sir.
You said construction is began in July?
We are anticipating, I'd have to go back and find my exact flyover, but I believe July is noted to proceed, that we've awarded the contract, we've got a, we've got a contract on board. I think we've got the last little yes from VDOT, everything is good. They always like to look over everything, make sure every T is crossed and every I is dotted. I believe we're waiting on that last, last approval from them, and we say go to work. But again, all the utilities are out of the way, everything is a go, we should be seeing dirt turn in the very near future.
And Broward Wood is okay. Broward Wood neighborhood.
That is a relative question.
Okay.
But yes, we have the right of way necessary to build the road.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Butler-Broiler?
Thank you, Mayor. Robert and Paul both, I just, I want to just thank you for the work that you're doing on the water sewer drainage project in Oakland, and I understand that we've hit some obstacles, large telephone sized, telephone pole sized obstacles, sorry, I can talk. But I appreciate the work that you all are putting in, and I hope that we can schedule a time to sit down and go over the whole project and all the different moving parts, and so I can understand exactly everything that we are doing and need to be doing. But I really appreciate it, appreciate that there is progress, so just wanted to say thanks. Thanks to all of y'all. That's a lot of stuff that you all oversee, and we appreciate all the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Johnson?
And Robert, I'm going to be really brief. I'm not going to talk about anything, I promise, except the spill, the spillway on Turlington. I just want to make sure that it's not going to be detained with what we have to go through with Portsmouth. Does it look like it's going to be a mess as far as developing what's going to happen there? Time constraints is what I'm looking at.
That's what I'm trying not to do. There were some, there appeared to be some comments we were getting from Portsmouth that was trying to delay things, and then they said, well, just go ahead and we'll fix it in the future. And we're like, no, we want to do this right. So the existing spillway that the bridge goes over today, they're telling us in the near future, they're going to completely do away with that and put an entirely different structure in. And I said, well, if you're going to do that, let's go ahead and do it, or let's hold, you know, let's figure out, we don't want to spend, we don't want to build a bridge and then realize in two years that we have bridge over dirt because they filled the spillway in. So again, that's why we've called for the meeting with them to try to discuss this and formulate a reasonable plan to move forward. It does not delay us, but yet does not build something that's unnecessary.
And that's my concern, because of the amount of development we've allowed on Turlington up to this point, it's got to proceed pretty quickly.
Yes, sir.
Other than that, I also want to thank you guys for all the hard work you've done, we know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Rector?
Whoop, Mr. Lewis, not go away. I just want to put a bug in your ear, if you've got some of these projects that you don't think are going to be able to be completed by the timeframes that require to get the money. Lakeside and Riverview could always use curbing to replace their wooden curbs that they've got, so I just want to keep that bug in your ear.
Yes, sir.
My only other general comment, and this is not for anybody in particular, but it, as we sit back and look at the CIP on paper, it's nice to see a presentation like this and see that some of that paper's been turned into bricks and mortar and paved roadways and whatnot. So I salute, you know, all the managers and the city staff for getting these projects done, and it looks like 24 and 25 are going to be banner years for getting, getting projects completed. And Mark, this one's for you, I'm assuming that the Bennetts Creek tenants' courts are going to include pickleball layouts?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? Once again, I'm not going to, I'm not going to start with questions or just make a few comments, because what we have here and the time constraints we have, I don't think our citizens lots of times fully realize how much is going on in our city, how many moving parts there are, and especially looking at a lot of our capital projects, I mean, there's a clear progression to each one of these projects. You know, they're time consuming, and depending on the obstacles and depending on funding determines how long they come to fruition. But I believe that we're using our resources prudently. Paul, I kind of felt bad for you for a minute, not about funds, but we're talking about libraries and parks, and there's only one person here that I know that gets excited about pump stations, besides you. Besides you, that would be this way. So, but you did a great job, and I'm going to try to spice it up a little bit next time, I know it's tough. But, you know, we really, we are indeed fortunate to have these, this team of department heads that are taking our vision with the manager's guidance and making things happen. I'm very, very pleased with where we are. I'm very pleased with where we're going. I'm very pleased with the allocation of resources. I think we're getting, as the old cliche says, the biggest bang for the buck as far as our citizens are concerned. I would like to ask the manager, if it's not too much of an inconvenience, if he could compile these PowerPoints and get them out to everybody on council. I know I am going to speak to a group on Friday, and there's, when people ask or want to know what's going on in our city, especially how it affects them and how their tax dollars are being used, I think this is a great way, just like Councilman Rector alluded to, you can see a CIP on paper, but to actually see how we've, what the progression is, what has been completed, what's been funded, and the direction we're heading, we've got a lot of good news out there that we need to get out there. So once again, I appreciate everything that you've done, and I'm very pleased with where we are. With that being said, that concludes our work session. We do have a need for a closed meeting this evening, so Madam Clerk, if you would please read the motion for consideration.
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment, appointment and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the community policy and management team, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Economic Development Authority, the Fine Arts Commission, the Historic Landmarks Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Library Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, the Planning Commission, the Sister Cities Commission, the Claim Communities Commission, the Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority, and the Tidewater Youth Services Commission. And item number two, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3, the consideration or discussion of acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically Tax Map Number 44 Asterit 62.
Council, a motion has been presented. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval. Councilman Williams?
Second, Ed, ma'am.
Second from Councilman Williams, is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
That concludes our work session, and we will reconvene at 6:00 P. M.